Yeah, yeah, I'm going the first week of August at least. Okay.
Council members, you don't, you don't, you don't need to log on to your, you don't need to log on to any Zoom today. No, I know, I saw. President Coke, Pro Ten, Kimbrough, we're, it's six thirty and we're, and we're streaming already.
Okay, we're gonna get started? Start our caucus.
Okay.
Yes, we are, uh... Okay, everyone, welcome to our Thursday, July eighth, uh, caucus of the Albany Common Council, our work session prior to our regular meeting. Uh, just for the record, council members, president, excuse me, present, Mr. Igo, Mr. Hoey, Mr. Conti, Ms. Fahy, Mr. Flynn, Ms. Love, myself, uh, Ms. Doche, Mr. Anani, and Mr. O'Brien. Jumping right into our, uh, agenda, uh, for approval of minutes from a previous meeting, I'll be offering the June twenty-first of twenty twenty-one meeting minutes for approval. Okay, on to local laws introduced, uh, we'll have local law N of twenty twenty-one by Mr. Conti. That will be an intro and be held for aging. Okay, next, under local laws held, uh, Ms. Doche, did you wanna con- continue to hold on local law C? Ms. Doche? Yeah, okay.
Um, I believe that we're not gonna have full attendance tonight. Um, I asked for confirmation of that, but I wasn't one hundred percent sure, I just wanna confirm that with you.
Yes.
All right, so I would like to hold.
Hold it, okay.
How will we, um, because I wasn't really hearing very clearly. Um, I'm not sure again, is my mic working?
You're talking through the mic, yeah.
That could help. It can only get better.
So, Mr. Conti, were you making a comment, or?
No, I was just trying to, to hear what we're doing with local law C. And so we're not...
We're not moving ahead with it, we're, it's still on, on the table. Okay, so moving on to, under local laws, onto local law F, uh, which is Mr. Balleran's, that'll be amended uh, at this, at this meeting, and then, um, it'll have to age. And then next, uh, Mr. Conti's local law G of twenty twenty-one. We will be, uh, voting on that. That's local law G of twenty twenty-one by Mr. Conti. Okay, uh, next, uh, we'll be dealing with, uh, local law H of, uh, twenty twenty-one by Mr. Anani as amended. Okay. And we'll be, uh, voting on that. Uh, moving on to ordinances introduced, um, by Mr. Anani, twenty seventy-one, twenty-one. Uh, and we were discussing, uh, the passage, we got the, the modifications made to that, Mr. Machado, correct? Based on, uh, Mr. Conti and Mrs. Doche's input, okay, so we'll be moving ahead with that as...
So, once that's, uh, introduced, uh, then there needs to be a motion to be unanimous consent to take it up on the same night as its introduction. And then, we can move back to, uh, USU moving for passage.
Okay.
Intro.
Just pause after intro. Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Three steps. Intro, motion?
Right, I make the motion unanimous consent, we vote, and then it goes back to him. Yeah. Right, thank you. Okay, and that was ordinance twenty seventy-one, twenty-one. Finding my place. Next, under ordinances, uh, held, uh, my ordinance, uh, eleven thirty-two, twenty-one, uh, will be voting on it, passed out of, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, a couple of nights ago with a positive recommendation. Following that, uh, Ms. Love's ordinance, uh, twelve fifty-one, twenty-one, we will also be voting on. Again, uh, passed the Finance Committee with, with a positive recommendation. Next, after that, by Mr. uh, Ms. Frederick and Mr. Johnson, ordinance fourteen fifty-two, twenty-one. Again, an ordinance that went through the Finance Committee and came out with a positive recommendation, we will also be voting on that. Next ordinance, uh, number twenty-two on the agenda is sixteen fifty-two, twenty-one by Ms. Love. Again, uh, by Ms. Love, went to the Finance Committee, came out with a positive recommendation, we'll be voting on that. Also, next, number twenty-three, by Ms. Fahy and Anani, seventeen sixty-one, twenty-one, uh, will be voting on. Uh, then, uh, on to item twenty-five mine, uh, ordinance nineteen sixty-one, twenty-one, uh, which went through the Finance Committee and came out with a positive recommendation, we'll be moving forward on that. On to resolutions introduced, uh, by Mr. Anani, we have fifty-seven seventy-one, twenty-one R, which, uh, we'll be, we'll be voting on, uh, from our discussions at our caucus, our previous caucus that we passed, uh, celebrating, uh, thirty-first anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'm sure Mr. Anani will be speaking on that. So, yes, and, um, and then, uh, lastly, I'd like to, well, not lastly, but, next, under, uh, ordinances, excuse me, resolutions introduced, we'll have a, uh, a resolution to add by majority consent by Mr. O'Brien. It's, uh, resolution fifty-eight seventy-one, twenty-one R, and it's a resolution, uh, approving the purchase of AV equipment, uh, for the chambers and allocating some money for the installation and training on its use. And I, I, uh, I, I believe time is of the essence, and we're trying to get, uh, moving on, uh, making the, the upgrades that we need to, so we'd like to pass that also uh, tonight. Next, on to resolutions held. Agenda item number eleven, uh, by Ms. Love, resolution forty-four fifty-one, twenty-one, uh, resolution, uh, for the recognizing, uh, the garlands and their contributions, that'll be a pass.
Mr. Kimbrough. Mr. Kimbrough, don't, this one, this one as well requires unanimous consent. The resolution for, um, Jeanette and Benjamin Garland.
Which one are you talking about?
No, the forty-four fifty-one, twenty-one, is that what you were just on?
Is that, um, just to clarify, is that because...
Um, under the ordinance, under the ordinance for street renaming, um, it says that any person who's still alive, it requires unanimous consent by the Common Council.
Okay, so that, that is it for...
Just to clarify, is it unanimous consent, or is it just a unanimous vote?
Unanimous, it's unanimous consent.
So if the vote is unanimous, that, and if that, or that...
I have it up right here, give me one second.
As opposed to having a separate motion to take it unanimous?
I believe it's just, yeah, I believe it's just the vote, so...
The vote needs to be unanimous.
Thank you, Richard. So that, that's it for the, uh, for the agenda. If you have a question, yeah. So any other questions, comments, discussion?
Not on the agenda. Not, not on the agenda. I have this too, um...
Yeah, just as unanimous consent.
First, you know, I noticed, um, that there is a second survey that's been put out by the COVID Recovery Task Force, which I happened to notice by, because of, well, we didn't get it, only I know because of an email I received from a third party. I think it was probably capitalized Albany that circulated it. So, I'm wondering if there's a way that council members can get this information directly, so that we can then circulate it, rather than depending on whether or not we have a third-party contact? And, uh, maybe we can, uh, circulate, get that link to it and send it out to everybody. Okay, um, and the other thing, I was just wondering if at our next caucus next week, with the permit parking legislation and moving forward on, uh, you know, trying to, uh, implement that, um, and there, it only, it'll impact certain members, but I wonder if we can have some time at the next caucus to do, if I can, you know, give a, a brief, very brief overall presentation, uh, and that we can identify those members that are interested or need to be a part of that process, uh, and then we can move forward, you know, the administration's already involved in some ways, but I think part of it is also just needing to identify which members here need to be part of the process because they have a potential interest in, uh, in it. So if I can just do a quick overview, which all members might find of interest, uh, and then we can use that also to identify those members that need to be involved.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Makes sense, thank you, Richard.
And I assume at the next caucus, we're also having capitalized here to talk about the CFA applications?
Yes, they'll be coming at the next one, the, the resolutions will be introduced at the next, um, council meeting, and they will be prepped for passage at that time.
Maybe you guys can just update us on what, what we're doing tonight.
So, tonight, uh, we're live streaming from my computer in that, uh, three hundred and sixty-degree camera. So it's capturing, uh, the perimeters, the dais, and then where the general public is. Not only is it a three hundred and sixty-degree, um, camera, it also has an omnidirectional microphone, so it should be picking up sound, hopefully to improve the sound quality that your constituents have as they watch the stream on Facebook.
All right.
That is the hope.
So, in terms of how the camera directs, does it, does it automatically focus on who's speaking?
It does not, uh, naturally focus on the speaker, but they're still able to see who is participating from their wards. JR is gonna turn it around.
Okay.
That's what it's looking like to the general public on the live feed.
All right.
You know, you do not need to log on to the Facebook. This is our temporary solution, hopefully it stays functional until we're able to do the more permanent update to the chambers, so...
And what is, uh, the ETA on the permanent, more permanent?
So, uh, I think the resolution is gonna be emceed tonight. I don't, I don't know if that was discussed yet. Um, once that happens, then Laura Golfo, um, who drafted the original resolution, will start working on the contract with the vendor. And then, once the contract is fully executed, he says it'll take about three weeks before he receives the equipment to do the installation, and he anticipated about a week, a week and a half of installation time. Then after the equipment is installed, then we go through the training period. The hope is to have someone from PEG access trained, someone from our internal IT department trained on the system, so that they can provide support, and the Common Council staff trained as well. PEG is gonna record the training, so we can memorialize it, and we'll also have, like, a training document that'll sit on the shelf. So if your staff grows or experience any turnover, it should be easier for whoever comes behind us to learn how to use the system.
Kelly?
Yeah, um, I had submitted, uh, legislation to, um, allow, uh, like boat trailers and RVs to be parked in, in people's driveways. Um, I know we talked briefly on it, but I was just wondering, I thought maybe it might appear tonight, but it doesn't. And the reason that I'm pushing it is, this is the RV and boating season, um, I, I don't wanna pass this in the wintertime when people aren't using RVs and what, well, they might be, but... Anyhow, I'm just wondering what the process is, um, so I can get that into a committee to look at it.
So we, we'll, we'll get it on the next, uh, agenda. Also, I, me and you had that brief co- conversation, I, I discussed with, uh, Commander Gibson from APD. And during my time with, with the APD, you could always park your RV in your, in your driveway, as long as you weren't blocking the sidewalk, it was never an issue. And I know the code has changed a little bit since then, um, but I assure you, if, if it occurs, you just gotta get the information to, uh, Commander Gibson, just from a conversation with him, and, and he'll, he'll correct and take care of that stuff for now. So if anyone gets them, the sooner you can, you can either reach out to me or directly to Commander Gibson, we'll get it taken care of. Again, it, it doesn't account for blocking the sidewalk or any of that stuff, but you, I mean, as a homeowner, you, you should be able to park your, your RV or boat in...
Okay, and again, it goes to codes, and codes might not be, you know, privy to that, so I think it's important that we get the, the law in the books.
Well, okay, I'll have a conversation recorded. Okay, to ju- to just make sure that it's not occurring until we can get it rectified in the law. Anything?
I would share with the general public that in addition to this, I'm picking up the sound in the disc, and I'll upload the disc, and then I'll copy the, uh, YouTube link right under the actual meeting, and then hopefully, you know... Uh, yep, I, I typically do it the day after.
Yes, and, and ideally, we, we wanted to be doing this stuff in real time, but of course, the technology and the age of the, of the equipment in this building makes that a little difficult, so this is, this is kind of a, a, a short-term, uh, fix for, for the issues that we're trying to take care of. And a- again, we apologize, but I, I would just remind the, the public that we used to have the meeting, record it, and then, and then upload it, and, uh, it, it wasn't the best quality, uh, but we're, we're working hard on, on taking care of that. And I apologize for any inconvenience folks have in, in tuning in tonight and participating, but we're, we're working on it. And since we, since we have a little more time, I'll just, I, I mean, I'll fill the space. Uh, a- as a part of, uh, the Violence Prevention Task Force, uh, we're, we're tasked with, with, uh, doing, taking some steps to eliminate or lessen violence here in the city. Uh, as one of our, um, initiatives, we, we, we kinda trying to set up these safe havens. Can everyone hear me? Everyone's got kind of a funny look on their face. These safe havens, one of which is, I wanna say, three forty-first Street, which is, uh, the Frank Chapman Institute. So, uh, I wanna, this, I think the seventeenth, we're gonna be doing a cleanup, uh, of, of the block over there. Um, and folks are welcome to attend, that's, I, I, I needed to reach out to Mr. Robinson and, and Ms. Love, because it, it's, it's their areas. It's a conversation I just had over lunch, and I'm just filling the time, since we have time, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss. And so, uh, again, members are welcome to come and help clean up, uh, send folks, participate in any way they see fit.
Yeah, on that, on that topic, um, in terms of the, uh, the governor's, excuse me, governor's recent announcement, uh, and the, uh, the funding he announced, which was already in the budget apparently, uh, and, and allocated for certain, uh, uh, programs and initiatives, which I assume, uh, based on my understanding of how that's targeted, that Albany is gonna be getting some chunk of that for violence prevention, for SNUG, uh, for youth employment programming. Do we know, or can we find out or pin down what, what we might be expecting and how that might be used?
That, that's in process right now, I mean, the, the announcement was recent, so we're trying to figure out how we interface with them and, and, and draw down some of that, the funding and, and, and allowable uses and all, all of that stuff, so that, that's in the process right now.
I mean, coming at, uh, it would be good to have that money earlier or to know how it's coming earlier in the year than right now.
Right.
But that's the way government works.
Yeah, it's gonna be very helpful. Ye- uh, yes, Mr. Balleran?
Uh, thank you, since we got a few minutes, uh, I just wanted to let you know that, so you, you should've received the updated version of local law F. Um, so, uh, please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or any concerns. Um, you know, we have made great strides to take as much input as possible from, uh, different stakeholders, colleagues, landlords, and residents, uh, to try to, uh, address different scenarios that might come up. So, uh, while still keeping the core, uh, purpose of the policy. So, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, uh, I will be introducing it today as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balleran. Got a couple more, couple more minutes, we can sit in silence or, or fill, fill the time if anyone has anything to add.
Thank you. I appreciate you. I could tell you jokes to try and keep you awake.
Which one'd you send me? It is, very. You know what? I don't wanna be the first one to state. You know what? I don't want to be the first one to stay. It took, it took time. It's live, it's, it's live, yes. It, it's, she said it's being, it's being livestreamed, yes. It's being livestreamed. She should be able to. Yeah, but you have to do it in person too. You can't.
It is seven o'clock. The call order, it's council meeting July 8th, 2021. And the words were great sitcom back in the seventies, welcome back. Welcome back, council members. Welcome back. Our residents as well. So with that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani. Ballerin. Conti. Dochet. Fahey. Farrell. Flynn. Frederick. Coe.
Here and present.
Igo. Johnson. Kimbrough. Love. O'Brien. Robinson. Fourteen present, one absent.
Let us two to five in the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we move on to our next item of our agenda, which is a public comment period. During the public comment period, public has five minutes to talk about any issue they choose to. When you come, please state your name and address for the record. At four minutes, I will let you know you have one minute remaining and then I will stop you at five minutes. At this time, council members cannot answer any questions during public comment period. So please do not address questions to them. If you do, they will not be able to answer those questions. Council members will answer or, or speak on anything you spoke about later on in the agenda if they choose to do so. So with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Daryl McGrath.
Good evening. My name is Daryl McGrath. I'm the owner and occupant of Six Irving Street. And I'm here as a representative of most of my neighbors on the street to ask that the council consider establishing some policy or guideline when a city agency or department issues a special contractor permit or a special emergency parking permit for contractors. We've had quite a time on my street in the last eighteen months. Coincidentally, both of these incidents involve the same contractor, but I'm not using anyone's name tonight because it doesn't matter who it was. This has happened more than once on our street. Irving Street is one of the smallest streets in the city. It's one block long. It's very narrow. It used to be an alleyway, so we can only park on one side of the street. Eighteen months ago, a property owner who owns several buildings in our immediate neighborhood, one on Irving Street, one on Elm Street that I know of, and at least one on South Swan Street, obtained, or his contractor obtained, a permit from the Water and Sewer Department to do almost simultaneous jobs on two of these buildings this gentleman owns. I don't know if it was the water line or the sewer line. They were started about three weeks apart. And this contractor just walked on this job. I don't know if he was finished or fired, but he left two trenches, four and a half feet wide, that went out to the middle of South Swan Street and Irving Street. He threw two steel plates about the size of a tabletop over the South Swan Street trench and he left two sections of sidewalk completely torn up. He left an entire concrete slab of, of sidewalk section balanced on the apron between the sidewalk and the curb. He never came back, nor did the property owner appear to be doing anything to resolve this. Ms. Fahey did intercede at about the two-month mark when we realized this was never going to get fixed. Suddenly, Water and Sewer Department managers were speaking to me. Still, nothing got done. This was a safety hazard. It was certainly a violation of the ADA and it was a mess. So finally, during the shutdown, I left a message for the Corporation Council's office and suggested somebody might want to drive over and take a look at this because they had a walloping lawsuit waiting to happen. Suddenly, everything started moving. The Water and Sewer Commissioner called me. And I have to tell you, that conversation didn't make a good impression on me. He was rude, dismissive and condescending. I was not happy to find out that I had to explain this entire situation to him. For about the fifth time, I had already told the whole story to several people in his department. He acted as though I worked for him instead of the other way around. He told me I was being rude. I needed to speak more quietly and stop interrupting. He gets a lot of credit for originality. I bet that's the first time a male authority figure has ever told a pissed-off woman to talk more quietly.
You have one minute remaining.
That problem got fixed. The same property owner now has been getting repeated extensions on emergency parking permits for a dumpster, a porta potty and at least six parking spaces on Irving Street for a job that's actually being done on Elm Street. He's accessing a back alleyway. He has gotten at least two extensions. This work started in May. It ground to a halt. And we've seen our neighbors getting towed for a job that's had no activity for weeks at a stretch. Could somebody please get the city agencies to follow up and stop rubber stamping these permits? Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Marlon Anderson.
Before I begin, well, of course, you all know who I am, I'm sure by now. But my name's Marlon Anderson. Speaking in my role as community advocate in the City of Albany, resident of the Center Square, neighbor in the City of Albany. Before I begin, I'm glad to see that everybody has made it through the pandemic, someone unscathed. I got questions about Jack. I'm not sure, but I'm sure that everybody's made it through unscathed, so I'm glad to see that. I hope everybody made it through with less difficulty and everything like that. I hope everybody continues to progress forward, healthy and happy. I was gonna withdraw from this after developments and actions and observations of the last pandemic year of the political situation and the social situation in the City of Albany. But then I got mad about the political situation and the social situation and economic situation in the City of Albany. And I said, I, I think I better just stay right where I am. Basically, I'm speaking about what's about to happen in the City of Albany. The City of Albany is awash and will be awash in cash from the federal government and from the state. I commend the governor for finally stepping up and stating what I've been pushing for and speaking about for years, that we are in a DEFCON four situation in the City of Albany regarding violence in the City of Albany. And one of the things that angered me much is the fact of during the pandemic, when you are not able to face the music, that there's a lot of back patting going on and things of that nature about the situation where people were dropping like flies. We've had in the last two years, record violence in this city. Record loss of life at the hand of guns in the City of Albany. And the action that has been taken is, been zero. And let me just say, I hope that when these monies are allocated from the state towards this gun violence, that we can understand that. We don't need to keep pursuing these models in the city that have failed miserably. We got enough hot dogs and hamburgers in the City of Albany. We don't need no more cookouts. We don't need no more giveaways. We don't need no more buybacks. We don't need people who got zero experience on the issue being put in leadership positions about those issues. We don't need that. We need success. We need to save lives in the City of Albany. We need to change the dynamic in the City of Albany that is leading to people being shot like it's for free. And that has to come from this building. There has to be aggressive action and aggressive leadership. And most importantly of all, with this cash coming and with every Tom, Dick and Harry drooling right now at the thought of their program getting a piece of the pie. A program that's really worthless to the effort and the issue. There needs to be aggressive leadership from this building, from the leaders that are here, those who will not be here, those who will be coming in. Because again, we have lives that are being lost on a daily basis. Lives that are being jeopardized on a daily basis. So when this money is allocated, I would advise, and I hope that the common council, from president on down, put together a public outreach, a public meeting about how we are going to spend this money. Not just give it away so we can buy more hot dogs and hamburgers to cook out in the street. Not just give it away so we can give away more toy bags. Not just give it away so we can continue to keep these organizations in the city that have failed miserably funded. We can't afford to do that no more. The results are telling. If you went to any corporation and came with the results that these programs and things have provided, addressing the safety of our community, addressing the improvement in our community, they'd be fired on the spot because they got a miserable record. So why are we gonna continue to?
One minute remaining.
Thank you, sir. Why are we gonna continue to fund these programs? Why are we gonna continue to throw money down dry holes? So we, as I said, we're awash in cash. Let's put that cash where it needs to be. Let's put individuals in places where they can be most effective to make that cash effective. Let's stop wasting money. Let's stop wasting time because we can't afford it. Our children are, are dying. Our children are in jeopardy. The city is not safe anymore. So we have to do something about it. So lead on the issue. Don't waste the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
David Lavoy.
My name is David Lavoy. I live at 12 Adriana Lane in Albany, New York. In a community called Grayledge, about ten years old. And my conversation today is to talk to you about a possible roundabout at the intersection of Northern Boulevard and Van Rensselaer. The, the work that's been done on the northern side of Van Rensselaer is a compliment. We went from a four-lane drag strip down to two-lane with a speed limit down to forty-five, with a bike lane and walk lane, and it's used quite a bit. I wish I could say I'm using it myself, but I drive by and I wave to it most days. What we're looking at is a roundabout that, that can do a couple of things. It can certainly, you know, be more energy efficient that we don't have cars stalled at light waiting to, to go through. Historically, and I, and I, and I've dealt with a couple of departments and a couple of engineering firms asking just general questions because mine is just a single voice. I've never come before you before. Quite impressed by the room that you do business in. So my desire was to see if we could at least start a dialogue about it. I know a project like this is more than two years away, but at least it starts with a voice. Having a gateway to the communities, which is what a roundabout would be, is a pretty significant thing. And with a road like that, and if you look at the design of the road as it is right now, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be fairly easy to do because it's still probably a million and a half dollar project. Some money can be saved by reusing the, the traffic light that's there right now. And historically, we haven't found any fatalities that have ever occurred because of a roundabout. And I think they're designed that way. So for energy efficiency, we certainly save on the gasoline use and so on by having a direct flow all the way through the, through it. Traffic light we can reuse. And it provides for a little bit more of easy traffic. Right now, there is absolutely no crosswalks. And what I mean by that are lines in the road where people are supposed to stop. So I see my jogging friends and walking friends coming through and they have to stop. Even with something like that, or even something temporarily that you could do simple enough is just put those in a lot more corners to allow pedestrians free access to walk, walk through it. Or make the ones that are there a little bit more clear. So as I said, you know, my compliments to what you've done in the past as far as the, the road and everything else that goes along with it. There's not a lot to my presentation, basically because I just wanted to get the word out and at least get you some information about the desires of our community and some of the other neighbors. With some of the construction possibly going on at Albany Memorial Hospital expansion, you know, that would bring even more traffic into the area. At least with a forty-five, which I'm not sure how many people actually do forty-five as I, my room backs up or my place backs up to Northern Boulevard and I hear them going much faster than forty-five. At least it will make them slow down going through a, a roundabout. Cosmetically, in the middle of it, it'll be much more attractive versus a little island that we have right there now. So my hope tonight is at least a reconsideration of it, of having a conversation down the road. If there's any need for any type of neighborhood involvement, I'll certainly lend my support in any way that we possibly can to help you. And hopefully, you know, if I see little rubber tubes down on the road, although at least we're measuring the traffic flow to see if there's some legitimacy to what we want to do. wanna do. But I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak with you, and thank you very much, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Charles Robinson.
Charles Obar Robinson, four zero four Livingston Avenue, lifelong resident of this plantation without representation. It's been a minute since I've been pandemic hit. When the pandemic came, that was natural for me. It was my whole life so far. I didn't have to change a thing. That's how I navigated through it so well, because it was natural. Then something happened. George Floyd said, please. He said, I can't. He said, I can't breathe. My mother always taught me the magic word to get the next person up off you was please or thank you. Them words don't work in life no more? I don't know how we evolved to this point, but then again, I do know how we evolved to this point, to this point, because I lived through it. But as I was living through it, certain people tried to convince me that I was living a lot. When I said A, B, and C, they said, no, you can't. Excuse me? When I said A, B, and C, they said, no, you can't. I have yet to meet a politician that kept his word. Never. Were y'all born to deceive? Or you born to serve? There's a lot of people on this, on this plantation, cops, you're supposed to protect and serve. You wondering why it's chaos within my community? You got a gun manufacturer fifty miles away that's going bankrupt. How do you think them guns wind up in my community? This, listen, I'm sixty-one years old, and y'all been giving some currency. And I'm down here to explain the difference between currency and money, because there's a big difference. Currency is a gift. Somebody gives it to you. That's what happened to the city. Now you got individuals that wanna hoard that gift that was given to you to become money. You only get money through sweat. It's called sweat equity. Google it. You wanna make some money in life, do something to sweat, and you will make some money. Now there's currency that was given to you. I don't know what the amount is, whatever the amount is, it's gonna be split fifteen ways. Each ward don't need the other ward in their business anymore right now, because they gotta worry about what's in their constituents right now. And we've been playing this game of politricks too long, especially in this city called Albany. And this is the first city. It's twenty-six letters in the alphabet. Albany started with A. The first letter of the alphabet is A. There's a reason Albany starts with A, and there's a major reason, because we're first at the fuckery. It starts here and it matriculates every place else in the world after it's, after we're the guinea pigs.
You have one minute remaining, Mr. Robinson.
And it's been that way for a long time. Now, my father told me, when, son, when you do politics, you follow the money. Yesterday, you really couldn't follow the money, but today you can because they got this thing called AI, artificial intelligence. I talked about this years ago. That's what's running everything now. Math is simple. One and one equals two. Fifteen divided by eighty equals what? The fifth ward is getting near fifteen. I don't, whatever anybody else is doing, I'm gonna make sure this time. We need that to develop our neighborhood. Before I leave, I'm gonna leave on this note. Thirty-five years ago, the government of a communist country gave their whole treasury to the poor people, not rich people. You're not rich enough? If you ain't made your money by now, something, is this a problem? There really is a problem. But anyway, thirty-five years ago, China gave their whole treasury to poor farmers, not some of it, all of it. And today, they are who? Just do, just, the no life is a no history. That eighty million belonged to the citizens, not one public official. Y'all, in the past, you haven't made not one right decision. What makes you think you're gonna make the right decision now?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Your time is up. Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Dr. Brenda Robinson.
Hello, my name is Dr. Brenda Robinson. I am a lifelong resident of Arbor Hill West Hill. I live at two sixty-six Livingston Avenue in Albany. It is a pleasure to be back in chambers. I'm glad everyone is well. First, I would like to thank the two committees who moved the ordinance forward for me to purchase lots on Livingston Avenue and Lark Street. Actually, those lots look like one lot, which I initially thought at first, and I was very surprised to find that it was sliced up in so many ways. I have been a strong steward for that area for many years. I am a small stone throw away from that lot in that area. I have for many years have been taking care of that area, picking up debris, cutting back weeds, snow removal, even when we had these large storms and some of my neighbors also pitched in, but being a strong steward, even strongly discouraging laudering in a lot. And oftentimes, I had to call on my fellow colleagues to help me out, such as Councilman Robinson, Councilwoman Love, and Councilwoman Kelly Kimbrough. He probably got a little tired of me calling him sometimes. But even Councilman Ron Bailey, they have been very supportive, and I've worked very hard. Your last meeting on the sixth hour was not able to attend, unfortunately, and I just wanted to address some comments made by Ms. Peachey Jones. And I guess I just would like to invite her to a few things, maybe not what you think, but invited to a few things. And those things would be to take a good look and adopt the equity agenda that her boss, Mayor Sheehan, and this common council has moved forward. It's very important to have equity in communities and have people of color in underserved areas to purchase properties and lots to take ownership in their area. These things are very important. I also would like to encourage and invite Ms. Peachey Jones to visit Arbor Hill, where I live, so she would be more informed about Arbor Hill and where I live. I appreciate your time and thank you for the support.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Can the clerk please call the next speaker? That is the last speaker we have signed up for tonight's public comment period, so public comment period is closed at this time. We're moving on to our next item of our agenda. Approval of previous minutes, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President, for the meeting minutes from our June twenty-first and twenty-twenty-one meeting for approval.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Hoy, for second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And approval of minutes passed. Continuing on with consideration of our local laws. Going to local laws. Hello, Mr., 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 sorry, local laws introduced, Mr. Anani, sorry. Oh, Mr. Conti. Jesus, writing himself down.
He was ready to take red for it.
Yeah, I wrote, I wrote it down, wrote the wrong name. Go ahead, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed the introduction of local law N of twenty-twenty-one and request it be held.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law repealing chapter twenty, Department of Buildings and Regulatory Compliance, and amending chapter forty-two, Departments and Commission to Enact a new part thirty-nine entitled Department of Buildings and Regulatory Compliance.
Thank you. That's being held. Now continuing on, Mr. Conti, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed local law H as amended and ask for its passage on a roll call.
Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending chapter one thirty-three A, Building Construction and Housing Special Provisions of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to issuance of notices of violations, penalties, and enforcement of stop work and unsafe and unfit orders under the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code and Albany City Code.
Yes, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, so we, Mr. Anani, local law.
Yes. We'll go back, because it's just a minute. We'll go back. Is there a discussion on this local law, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to be back. So this local law H, what we're trying to avoid is the common situation of having to declare a building unsafe, unfit, particularly to properties that can be easily fixed, whether by the property owner or by the tenant. This piece of legislation is going to be giving opportunities to the property owner to make needy repairs. If they are unable to make those repairs, Department of Building and Coes would put out an RFP and to ask, give it to the lowest bidder to make some improvements to the property. We're going to hire a third-party contractor who would bid for the job in case the landlord is unable to make those repairs. The city will hire the contractor with the lowest qualified bid, but the cost of the repair will be charged to the property owner. This would avoid other costs associated with having to keep buildings occupied while also protecting the health and safety of our tenants. During the pandemic, there was a situation where there was a tenant, there was a property owner who was trying to revic the tenant. It was brought to my attention that the property owners started destroying some of the properties, some of the property, to try to revic the tenant, to deem the property unsafe, unfit. This is a common practice by some property owners, landlords in our city. And when this type of situation happens, the city would have to find shelter for that tenant. The city will have to find a place, leaving that tenant homeless. And what this legislation is going to do is, for the property owners who are unable to fix their property because of unsafe, unfit, the city of Albany would hire someone to assist. These proposed legislation would allow the city to be more proactive in addressing and improving our housing stock. Today's a great day, and I'm confident this will help significantly improve the quality of life in many of our neighborhoods. Again, most of this money, particularly to hire contractors, going to be done with the rise grant that we received from our Attorney General Letitia James. I wanna thank her, and also wanna thank Building and Coes, Commissioner Rick LaJoy, and also Rob McGee for this legislation, and also the administration for putting this legislation forward. Quite frankly, inaction is not a choice. Our neighborhoods, our community, our property owners need to take a, invest a proactive role in making sure that our properties are up to code, and also making sure that the quality of life is addressed. Allowing Building and Coes to take action on these repairs is going to make housing stocks much safer, and it's going to secure renters, stabilize and strengthen Albany's neighborhoods. Thank you, and I urge my colleagues to support this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Doshet?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Hoey?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson? Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lo?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes. Continuing on with local laws, Mr. Bowe? Mr., no, local law after amended? I thought it was his law. Local law efforts. Move to amend? Mr. Bowe?
Thank you. I move to amend local law F twenty-twenty and allow it to age.
Thank you, Mr. Bowe. Continuing on with local laws, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice local law G of twenty-twenty-one requests passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Can the clerk please read the local law?
Local law amending Article nine, Building Construction and Regulation of Part Two, Building Construction of Chapter one thirty-three, Building Construction of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the power of the chief building official to act in emergencies.
Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a small bill, but it's an important bill. It would clarify the authority of the chief building officer, official, to act in the event of violations of the Uniform Fire Prevention Code, when such violation constitutes an imminent safety threat. It also changes language describing the obligation of the property owner to reimburse the city for the costs of work performed, according to city code, to make it easier for the city to recover such debt after the fact. This bill is actually part of a package of code enforcement reforms and amendments, one of which was local law H, which we just passed by Mr. Anani, and a local law by Council Member Fahy that was adopted at the last meeting. So this is the third part of that three-bill package that I think will make some significant code enforcement reforms that will help us improve quality of life, including building conditions and rental units, et cetera. Now, again, I want to acknowledge the work of Rob McGee from the Court Counsel and Rick LaJoy from the Building Department who are here for the work that they've done in putting this together and putting a lot of work into putting this whole package together. So I want to acknowledge the work that they've done and ask for your support and passage of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any further discussion on a local law? Seeing none, can the clerk call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti? Doshet?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Hoey?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lo? O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes. Reports from standing committees? Mister Flynn?
The Parks and Recs Committee met on June twenty-third to discuss capital lights in the park. Uh, we had great discussion, pros and cons. Uh, we tabled the legislation and we're going to meet July twenty-seventh at five-thirty to discuss more. We're inviting more six-board residents. We're going to have, uh, DGS, the police there, to discuss some of the issues that occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mister President. The Planning, Land Use and Economic Development Committee met last Tuesday to continue their discussion of proposed amendments to the USDO. And, um, also on Wednesday at the Common Council caucus, there was a, a review by, um, planning staff for the whole council on work up to this date on the USDO amendments. Uh, we will continue meeting. Our next meeting is, uh, July twentieth to continue discussion on, uh, USDO proposed amendments.
Thank you. And I normally don't comment on legislation like this or, but the USDO work that our council members have been doing has been great work. Um, and I know some people won't recognize that work or understand that work, but the work that our council members are doing on the USDO is going to help stabilize the city and transform it. So, I know the public doesn't know this, but the council members are doing great work on that. And, uh, so, public should show up and be engaged, especially when it comes to the USDO. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Mister President?
Uh, Mister Igo?
The Law, Buildings and Coats Committee met on, I believe it was June twenty-eighth, and we took up Mister Ballerin's proposed local law F, and that was reported out of committee to the full council, uh, with no recommendation.
Thank you, Mister. Igo, Mister Kimbra?
Thank you. Mister President, the Public Safety, uh, Committee will be meeting on, uh, July thirteenth to discuss local laws L and M, uh, one for creating the, uh, Public Safety Commission and the other, uh, for, uh, discussing the use of chemical weapons and kinetic, energy munitions on, uh, civilian populations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kimbra. Seeing all the reports, we're going to move on to ordinances introduced. Uh, Mister Anani?
Thank you, Mister President. I notice ordinance twenty dot seventy-one twenty-one and ask for its introduction.
Mister Kimbra?
Thank you, Mister President. I'd make the motion that we take this up and pass it today by unanimous consent.
And we're doing a majority cons, uh, unanimous consent on this because it's the inter, ordinance has been introduced today and basically we're going to be voting on it today as well, if I'm correct. Okay, uh, so all those in favor of Mister Kimbra's motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Staying? Motion passes. Mister Anani?
Thank you, Mister President. I notice ordinance twenty dot seventy-one dot twenty-one R and ask for its passage on a roll call.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance temporarily suspending certain provisions of Chapter Three Seventy-five of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the regulation of sidewalk or outdoor cafes in order to allow continuation of the extended patio and outdoor seating program.
Discussion?
Just, just, just in those.
I would recognize Mister Conti.
The title is incorrect.
What did you say?
The one in the agenda, I believe, is incorrect. The one that's on the active calendar is the actual correct one.
She just might want to read this correctly.
An ordinance temporarily suspending certain provisions of Chapter Three Seventy-five of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the regulation of sidewalk or outdoor cafes in order to allow continuation of the extended patio and outdoor seating program.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mister Anani?
Thank you, Mister President. Last year, while COVID nineteen pandemic was raging throughout city and across the world, we were forced to reexamine how to do business. For our local restaurants, that change was drastically changed as a result of, in a loss of business and a number of restaurants all across the ci- city and state were forced to close. However, those restaurants that survived, one of the major reasons of their survival was because of the lifeline provided through the executive order by the governor and also by the mayor to provide outdoor dining. When we implemented an expanded outdoor dining, at the time, it was found to be a safe alternative to eating inside. At the same time, our restaurants could expand their capacity to serve more customers, bringing in more revenue for our small businesses. Fast forward to now, with more than seventy percent of New Yorkers receiving at least one vaccine and the crisis effectively over, we don't need to go back to the way things were when our crisis has created a new way for people to support local restaurants. And people still like this new way of eating dining. That was the spirit of this legislation, the spirit of crafting this local law to make outdoor dining permanent. For many of our restaurants who are still recovering from the financial havoc this pandemic has caused, keeping extended outdoor dining means preserving a new way to generate revenue and also to help our residents to feel comfortable in dining and supporting our businesses. There's still some that are out there who don't feel comfortable dining inside. And we need to figure out a way and encourage, as the legislative body, residents to restart Albany and to encourage people to come back out and support our business. I understand that there are some, my colleagues, who are uncomfortable making this, uh, permanent so soon. The alternative bill we have here would extend the outdoor cafe program past the expiration of the emergency order, which is something we all agree on. While I wish the council could have made it permanent for the sake of certainty and consistency for our restaurants that are still recovering from the economic fallout, I believe this is the best alternative to ensure that our restaurants remain beyond the expiration of the current program. I want to thank my colleagues who came up with amendments to, because at the end of the day, this is about supporting our local restaurants. You might have different paths to get there. Uh, I want it permanent, you know, but, you know, sometimes you have to take small steps, small incremental steps. I want to thank, uh, also our new court counsel, Martha Mahoney, for helping craft this legislation. I also want to thank, uh, Richard Conti for a few amendments. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor and send a clear message and also can't forget our corporate counsel, John F. L., who also assisted with this legislation. Uh, I urge my colleagues to support this legislation and to support our restaurants who are in dire need for our support. Uh, thank you all. And I urge all my colleagues to support it.
Yeah, tough when you start naming names, you might forget somebody. Mister Conti?
I'm sorry, I missed that one. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mister President. Um, I, I think this is the best approach right now because this, this topic has come up in our, uh, USDO discussions in terms of, uh, sidewalk cafes uh, and making these provisions permanent, which have proved popular. Um, I do want to note that to some extent, this is also dependent on provisions in state law, especially I understand with regard to the SLA, uh, that make it possible for municipalities to do this. The governor just signed into law a bill that, uh, extends those provisions that were part of his executive order for an additional year. Uh, so, wh- while we can work on, on this in terms of expanding the ability of establishments to use wider, uh, sidewalk space, uh, still maintaining pedestrian access, uh, we still need, uh, support on the state level, uh, to continue the program on a longer-term basis. Uh, but I think, again, you know, outdoor dining has always been pretty popular. Uh, and if anything, the pandemic has, uh, demonstrated that it's, it's even more popular. Uh, and the expanded, uh, patios and sidewalk cafes that we were able to implement have been very popular uh, in different neighborhoods. I know up in Pine Hills, where Mister Anani is especially, that beautiful, uh, uh, long scope of cafes at the point, uh, and I have a few in my ward as well. Uh, so, uh, you know, I, I, I very, very much support this uh, and I'm confident that we're going to have a more permanent, uh, provision when we finish our, uh, USDO review. Uh, it's just going to have to figure out what we can do and can't do uh, and how this all interfaces with what the state allows us to do. Uh, but I think we should, you know, move on the expectation that those state provisions are probably going to be made long-term, if not permanent, because again, they've been very popular. So I support this, be voting in favor and be, uh, co-sponsoring as well.
And once again, Mister Conti, thank you for that assist on people who might be listening under, wondering, well, the state passed this law, how does that affect this law? Thank you for explaining that so people understand, like, how this law coincides with the state allowing us to move forward. With that being said, any more comments on this? Mister Bowden?
So, I was going to say, in addition to it being a good for us, more businesses, it's also good for our residents to enjoy to eat outside. I mean, we have, you know, great businesses to eat outside in the live world, like Pepper Jack's. We can normally get away from you outside and enjoy some time with your, with your family and friends. But now, because of the extension, it's been extended to other businesses where you can go to other great restaurants and enjoy, enjoy outside dining, uh, and I think that's a plus. I think it's helping some of our small businesses and some of our new small businesses, like the Tex, Max Tex, um, well, and Washington. Uh, they got great, great food for all of our residents, uh, and they have outside dining. And I think, you know, those little businesses that are new, uh, and some that, uh, have already been established are really benefiting from this. I'm glad that you brought this call. I'm glad we can get compromised to act now, to bring action now and not wait for after the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Bowden. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbra?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lo? O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes, I mean, ordinance passes, excuse me. Moving on to ordinance as held. Mister Kimbra?
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, I notice ordinance eleven thirty-two twenty-one and ask for its passage.
Thank you, Mister Kimbra. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the Common Council authorizing the sale to Amon Restorations LLC of nine forty-eight Broadway. Tax map parcel number sixty-five dot sixteen dash one dash thirty-two.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Uh, Ms. Lo?
Thank you, Mister President. I notice ordinance twelve fifty-one twenty-one and ask for its passage.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the Common Council authorizing the sale to Brenda Robinson of two fifty-six Livingston Ave, tax map parcel number sixty-five dot sixty-five dash five dash sixteen and two fifty-eight Livingston Avenue, tax map parcel number sixty-five dot sixty-five dash five dash fifteen.
Thank you. Any discussion on this ordinance? Ms. Lo?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, I'm just going to make this short. I listened to Dr. Brenda Robinson's speech about Peachy Jones from HR. Um, I would go and listen to the video, but I think it was inappropriate for someone from HR to speak on property that she had no knowledge of and had no business in. Uh, Dr. Brenda Robinson, like she stated, she's been, uh, taking care of that property longer than anybody even really knows. But again, I will address this situation with the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. Any further comments? Mister Robinson?
Thank you, Mister President. I just want to note for the record that I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Yes, sir. Did you note it? Mister Ballerin?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say, uh, I support this, I think it's important that, and as far as keep properties, uh, especially in vacant lots, uh, only while people live in the neighborhood. Uh, so, if, if, it's where they live by the next to, the, the vacant lot, the thing that there's a few lots away and they're thinking of it and it, it's going to be a value for our community, we should support. Uh, and, uh, Dr. Robinson is a good, well, a good neighbor and should just to make this happen. And if she sees a vacant lot that has not been taken care of or she's been physically taking care of it, then we should make it easier for, for that to recover. Uh, and I think we should have that, I mean, how do you look at all of our vacant lots? Because people who own on their block are going to take care of their block a lot better than people who just own there and don't live in the neighborhood. So, I'm, I'm, I'm appreciative that you live in our neighborhood and I'm appreciative that you, uh, taking ownership of this property, uh, because you didn't have to take ownership. You know, by taking ownership, you are going to be now felt responsible for, or before, so it's just a nuisance in your neighborhood. So, I appreciate that and I think we need continuously encourage that type of ownership and buyback in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Robinson. Any further discussion? Mister Anani?
Yeah, uh, I just want to just say briefly, uh, I know that the city is actually working on, uh, similar programs that I believe is called, um, loan to own type of program. And I hope that the public are, you know, there is a property on your block, you're, uh, mowing it, removing the snow, taking care of it, reach out to the city if you're interested in purchasing that property. Again, what's good for the neighborhoods was good for the city. So, we have individuals who are interested in an empty lot that's been vacant for years. If you are interested, reach out to the city. This is the type of, uh, examples that we would like to see, uh, take place in our city. Uh, everyone taking care of their block, uh, uh, their neighborhood, one block at a time. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Mister Anani. Any no further discussion? Can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbra?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Lo? O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Sounds like a big crowd downstairs.
Thirteen in the affirm.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinance as held, uh, Ms. Frederick? Oh, this is your ordinance?
Thank you, Mister President. I notice ordinance fourteen point fifty-two point twenty-one and I ask for it to be read and passed, please.
Thank you. Uh, can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the sale to Burke Community Service Corporation of a portion of the city-owned Delaware Paper Street and a portion of the city-owned Alexander Paper Street.
Is there a discussion on these ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll? Oh, can't see back there.
I just also want to note for the record, for this ordinance, I'll be recusing myself as well.
For this ordinance, okay. Thank you. Can a clerk please call the? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballard.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Conti.
Yes.
Dosette.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbra.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on, uh, Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance sixteen fifty-two twenty-one and ask for his passage.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Can clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the sale to Dr. Brenzes Robinson of the city-owned property located at twenty-three Lark Street, tax map parcel number sixty-five sixty-five dash five dash nineteen.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Robinson?
That's my last recusal for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballard.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Conti.
Yes.
Dosette.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbra.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on, ordinance is held, Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance seventeen sixty-one twenty-one and ask for its passage and roll call vote thereon.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article five A Notice of Violation of Chapter three one three Solid Waste of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to shortening the compliance period for code violations related to health and safety.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this ordinance concerns, uh, violations regarding property maintenance, uh, garbage, vermin, undergrowth, and, uh, that pose a threat to health and, people's health and safety. Uh, normally, uh, once the property owner is notified, they have five days, uh, to correct the situation. Uh, what this would do is in situations where, um, the commissioner or their designated deems that there is a persistence, persistently non-compliance situation, it would enable them to, uh, order immediate compliance. Uh, and I, I think many of us have experienced these types of situations where, uh, property is continuously reported, and it really does affect, uh, both, sometimes both, uh, people who live on the property and, uh, also people who live nearby. So, this just gives the commissioner, uh, that opportunity, uh, to get in there and clean up, order, order the property, clean it up, uh, much more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy.
I would ask for everyone's support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Any further discussion? Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, I also want to thank the sponsor, and also thank the quality of life task force, uh, where this legislation originally from. Uh, you know, I, I, I really love this city, uh, and when I see, uh, residents, uh, not taking care of their property, uh, or just littering, wreaths all across, uh, certain parts of our city, uh, property owners just not caring, not, it, it, it hurts my heart, you know? And, uh, there are some bad actors out there, and as the legislative body of the city, uh, we have to act, and this is one way that we can send a clear message to, uh, the perpetrators. Uh, this is going to enhance the quality of life of many of our neighbors. Uh, this is a legislation that is a hundred percent supported by leadership of, uh, from the general service. Uh, they're strongly behind us. Uh, there are some property owners who rather, uh, the city come and take care of their violation rather than paying someone to take care of it. Uh, some people just wait the last minute, or don't even take action to address this huge quality of life issue. Uh, I have a property right now in my ward, and every summer, without fail, on the corner of Park Avenue and South Main, it's overgrown, uh, weeds, uh, sometimes over the meadow. Uh, and, uh, this legislation is going to address that, uh, repeat offenders who, quite frankly, don't care about this city. Uh, we're going to make sure that they understand that their behavior is unacceptable. Um, I also own this property, it's even on, uh, through Scott and Duncan, uh, again, DGS, every year, for, for the past couple of years, the city has to go there, take care of it. Uh, the neighbors complain, send emails to us, send emails to DGS, and ultimately, after three months, uh, if you're lucky, those property, uh, will be taken care of. So, we're sending a message that that type of behavior is quite frankly unacceptable, and we're gonna do something about it. I want to thank the sponsors, I want to thank, uh, the members of the Quality Life Task Force, and, uh, and the DGS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Seeing no further discussion, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes.
Dosette.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Fahy.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbra.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinance is held, Mr. Kimbra.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance nineteen sixty-one twenty-one, ask for his passage.
Thank you. Can clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant to ten fifty-three Brewing LLC of an easement in the city of Albany over a portion of the city right-of-way of Bridge Street for the construction and maintenance of an ADA compliant ramp and deck at Druthers Brewing Company.
Discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballard.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Dosette.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbra.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. That concludes ordinance held. Mr. Kimbra?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rest of the ordinance is on the way to hold.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions, resolutions introduced. Uh, Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution fifty-seven seventy-one twenty-one, ask for his passage and roll call vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council recognizing and celebrating the thirty-first anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, July as Disability Pride Month in the city of Albany.
Discussion on this, Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, he was reading, uh, this, 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 I think it's important, uh, that he recognize, uh, individuals of all, uh, the city of Albany, and people of all races, one of our, religion creed, uh, being raised in another, uh, this resolution is covering the thirty-first anniversary of the passage of the American Disability Act, uh, quite frankly, is a watershed moment, and a pivot to the basis of civil and equal rights of all people with disability. Uh, this resolution will celebrate also July twenty-twenty-one as disability pride month, and, and then also the diversity of disability community consists of people of all races, ethnicity, genders, and sexual orientation. Uh, this legislation was actually brought by a neighbor, uh, and I just want to thank him for sending it, because I believe that as a city, uh, when we embrace each other, we attract more people to want to live in our city. Uh, so, uh, I want to thank, uh, all my colleagues supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, you know, it's good to recognize the ADA anniversary, and I do support the resolution, and, uh, would also co-sponsor, uh, it as well, and, uh, thank the, uh, sponsor for bringing it up tonight. Uh, but I think it's also a good time for us to, uh, maybe, uh, look at the need to, as a council, to take more affirmative steps to assure that we are creating a truly accessible city. Um, for older cities such as ours, uh, where public infrastructure is significantly aged, uh, that's particularly important, uh, especially, I think, for some of our, our downtown neighborhoods, uh, where we are more densely populated and, uh, walkable, uh, it, that's all the more important to have safe streets and sidewalks, uh, that you can actually walk on or traverse that are not cracked, broken, heaved, et cetera. Um, I know there's an ADA advisory committee within the Department of Administrative Services, uh, to help work to make the city more accessible. Um, it's unclear to me how often that it meets, uh, and maybe we should exercise some oversight over that and get a better sense as to what, what's happening in that perspective. Uh, but getting back infrastructure needs, especially sidewalks, uh, which are, you know, poorly maintained, cracked, or, uh, uh, heaved, heaved is that, you know, tree roots tend to heave the plates up, and they create problems where you can't, wheelchairs can't go over. If you're sighted, you can't really use them, uh, and they're, they're a safety hazard. Um, and maybe, uh, we can, uh, consider, i-if it's feasible, even to do, uh, a needs inventory. Uh, maybe that's something that could be included in the budget, that's, uh, you know, we should be thinking about what we might want to get in the budget. Some type of a needs inventory in terms of sidewalk infrastructure, uh, rather than this haphazard sometimes of, you know, you get a complaint, you try to get it fixed, uh, it's, it's just a broader problem in some wards and neighborhoods than, uh, uh, something like that. Uh, and maybe, um, set aside some funding for corrections, maybe some of the, uh, relief funding we're getting, that might be a good, uh, use to really make the city more, uh, safe, walkable, and, and livable in that respect. Um, also, another area which I, I'm interested in, I might be proposing something, is, uh, doing more on building accessibility. Um, we have many situations, for example, where private businesses, uh, especially, uh, downtown, where, if the older businesses, where just one step, uh, can create or impede access. Um, I understand there are some programs in other cities called, uh, a one-step program, uh, that would, in effect, waive building department application fees, uh, for a business that's, that seeks just to eliminate that one step, that can, in some respects, be the difference in being able to access a building or not access a building. Uh, and it's something, um, I'd like to look at, um, and possibly creating, and maybe a funding pool also for that, maybe through the Community Development Agency. But I think, you know, again, um, we, we need to, uh, step back a little bit and, uh, do some oversight a little bit more in terms of, to what extent, uh, we do have accessibility issues, uh, to what extent we can address them in a more positive forthright way, uh, rather than responding to complaints. So, I support the resolution, uh, and I hope we can also, again, look at a more proactive approach to some of these issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I brought this up at our caucus on Wednesday, that while I support this, and I will vote yes on it, it hurts. It hurts to be the representative for the fifteenth ward. And I, you know, we talked, you know, I just heard something about density. All the wards are divided up pretty much equally, but we're not getting equal treatment in the fifteenth ward. We have two main thoroughfares, Russell Road and Berkshire Boulevard. That last word I said, Boulevard. We don't have sidewalks. Anybody on a wheelchair, or on crutches, or barely able to walk, or would, being blind, what do they do? You know, I asked for a child at play sign for one of my streets, and I was told, children should not be playing in the streets. And I said, we don't have sidewalks. Well, that's no excuse. Four years I've been asking for sidewalks. Well, three in nine months. You know, I was told, we're gonna look into it. Um, I had Brad Glass come up a few months ago, walk it, he sees it. The sidewalk ends at the border of North Bethlehem and the fifteenth ward on Russell Road. And we only want one side, just that we can walk our kids to school. Eagle Point School is on Russell Road. When my son was going to school and was Bring Your Child to School Day, Walk Your Child to School Day, I couldn't walk my child to school. Councilman Igo just told me, he, his grandson can't go to Eagle Point because of the lack of sidewalks. You know, I, I, when I, when Dorsey Appler, who introduced the equity agenda, talked to me, she said, you know, not having sidewalks is part of this equity agenda that you should be able to get them. You know, I hear about all the money coming in, and everybody, you know, going for that piece of pie. You know, I don't want it for me, but I would like to see sidewalks for the people in my ward. And, you know, and again, I, we gotta understand what's going on, where we're looking to try to help people with this ADA resolution. I agree, you know, and any of us can become disabled at any point. My mother-in-law now is on a wheelchair. I can't bring her down. I mean, I can bring her down the ones, my street, on the street, but I can't go anywhere. I can't bring her to Stewart's for an ice cream or anything like that. This time of year, you like to get out. So, I just hope we can do something, and I'm gonna continue to fight for this, uh, but it, it's sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I absolutely, uh, support this resolution, and I appreciate everyone's comments so far. Uh, uh, the discussion about the importance of, uh, walkable neighborhoods, especially for our disabilities, of critical importance. And, uh, I am reminded that, uh, even though there's no snow on the ground now, uh, that's a huge issue here in the city of Albany, and, uh, we've talked before, we've met with, uh, general services about coming up with a plan to do a better job for, uh, with accessibility of our sidewalks and, and street crossings in the winter, and I think that's also something that we have to keep. Uh, it has to be a priority for us here, here in the city of Albany, uh, that's going to improve the quality of life of all of our citizens, um, and in particular, our disabled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Doshed.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy. Yes, co-sponsor. Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Uh, resolution passes. Continuing on resolutions, introduce Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to add Resolution 5871-21R by majority consent.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Bryant, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 5871-21R, and ask for its passage.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Could the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council approving the purchase of audiovisual equipment for the Common Council chambers and allocating monies for installation and training services on set equipment.
Is there a discussion on this resolution? Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, one of the things, uh, I guess one of the blessings of COVID was we went, uh, onto Zoom meetings, which was probably the first time in my life, as council, and I remember there were many, uh, broadcast of council meetings, and through that technology, they became accessible. Uh, during that time, I have to note that, uh, we have a number of people who thank for the, uh, uh, putting together a proposal to rewire the council chamber and to make it capable of live broadcast, just like the county legislature has been doing for a while now. Um, the, uh, PEG Access Board created a subcommittee, which is Zach Simpson chair, and they put together a listing of equipment that they thought would be necessary to, uh, accomplishing this, to have a clear audio, clear, uh, visual and, uh, online direct live streaming of the meetings. It was put out to bid, and I must especially thank, uh, Danielle and JR for doggedly determining, following through on this. I know the, uh, a couple of the things had been changed in the original proposal, but they troubleshoot that, and Tech Solution came up with the bid, which, uh, is covered by money that was originally granted to us by Time Warner, when they were still the cable provider. The fifty-eight thousand eight, uh, fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars of equipment is fully covered by a grant from the cable provider. And then, uh, my understanding is the seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is going to cover some of the labor of installation and also the training, is already covered in our budget. And we didn't think we'd be back in this chamber until September, so this was kind of progressing through. But then when the governor changed the order on open meetings law, we suddenly found ourselves back here. And I can commend our team for putting together what they managed to put together. But I know for a few of those committee meetings and that, it was dismally hard to understand and to hear clearly, uh, within this chamber. So that's why we put this together on majority consent and are asking for its passage tonight. Uh, but we're assured by the budget office that the money is there and that, and as Danielle explained to us during caucus, uh, we expect certainly by September to have this system up and running. So hopefully it'll run as smoothly and clearly and, and provide as much involvement for the community to live, live-streaming meetings, uh, by the end of the summer. So I ask your support on this, and I commend the members of our team that worked to put this together while we were closing the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Igo.
Uh, are we on other business now? I'm sorry, Kelly. Are we on, before you adjourn, are we going to get into some other business? I just have a comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Don't worry about it, Igo. Uh, any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Doshed.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Uh, yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Robinson. Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on those resolutions held, Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice, uh, Resolution 4451-21R, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Albany, celebrating the contributions of Benjamin G. Garland and renaming a part of Clinton Avenue in his honor.
Thank you. This resolution was amended. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, due to the nature of our, some of our legislation, it, I ask that this be passed by unanimous consent because we're making the, the amendment and changing it here at the meeting, so.
Thank you. Uh, discussion on the resolution? Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is, I've been knowing this, this call all my life, so this is... Well, I just want to just make it clear that, uh, the family would like to celebrate this on September the 8th. That would be the Mother's Day. So if we can get this to, uh, build the road, get the signs and stuff, um, I mean, and, uh, that, that would be the day of the celebration. Thank you.
Yes, I just would like to say, um, on behalf of many families that the Garlands, uh, family have supported in their most neediest of times, you know, we thank you, we appreciate you, we celebrate you, and it's an honor, uh, that we're going to take a measure like this to, uh, celebrate what your family has meant to our, um, city. So I just wanted to say thank you again, and I know from a personal standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any no further discussion? Can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti. Doshed.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fahy.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love. O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes unanimously. That ends for Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the resolutions on the agenda are held.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
Mr. Kimbrough, just briefly, I'm not sure if everybody here saw the article in the newspaper about, uh, getting a tree study done again. It's supposed to be finished rather quickly. Well, I, I believe there was one, I know there was one done approximately twenty years ago. And the city also got a grant back then, and they brought in students from Cornell University. They had laptops. They were supposed to go around and do the same study of every tree in the city. And they got through two-thirds of it through a whole summer. And, uh, there were, I believe, over two thousand trees when they left in imminent danger. And I don't know if they've all been taken down. It would be nice to know. And we'll see, we'll see what happens with this because they're supposed to also do a reforester the year after this with some, some more state money. Why, it didn't happen last time. The money dried up, I believe. It was, I don't know, maybe ninety-seven. So, keep your eye on that. And I have one other thing that kind of I heard tonight, and I know I have mixed feelings on it. Uh, Judy Doshed, uh, you said tonight you weren't going to bring up a piece of legislation because the full council would not be here this evening. Well, I think, especially in this time of year, there will be vacations, and I don't know if we, you know, right, just picking a time when certain people aren't here to vote on, uh, to vote on certain issues. So I just want to put that out there for everybody. So I've had some people tell me they're going on vacation, this and that, and I don't know if we're going to be delaying things or pushing things when other, certain people aren't here or not, but just leaving, leaving it out there.
Thank you, Mr. Igo. Ms. Robinson?
If I, if I can just respond?
Ms., Ms. Doshed, I'm going to recognize Mr. Robinson first, then I'll recognize you. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to, uh, bring awareness to, um, one of the issues when we were talking about the, uh, streets and, I mean, the sidewalks is the constant, um, and the prevalence of speeding on our streets. Um, it is becoming a real issue, and if something is not done, somebody's child, someone will get hurt pretty bad. Um, over the summer, uh, what did I say, about a month ago, uh, when I was, um, out, I was almost hit, um, by a car speeding down the street. And I know one of the things that, you know, we talked about speed bumps, and they say we can't do speed bumps because of the, um, because of snowplows or whatever, but something needs to be done, and something needs to be done fast. So, um, I, you know, hope all my council colleagues that we can come up with a solution to bring to the mayor's office or something, uh, to take care of this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I'm going to recognize Ms. Doshed at the moment.
So I'm, um, frustrated, uh, with regard to the history of local law C. And I just want to know, and I, you know, I, um, it was ready to be brought up for a vote twice before. Um, and other people made the decision that it would not be voted on. Um, and, um, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's unfortunate that it was not brought up, um, those particular times. And I'm not going to go through the whole history, but I, I, I can't let that come and go without pointing out that twice before it was, uh, supposed to be voted on and people were ready and, and members of the public were anxiously waiting, um, to vote.
I do understand your frustration, but I do know that I've talked to people tonight that have vacations planned, and I don't know if this is going to continue and if it should, but if, you know, I don't know. I'm just bringing it up.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Robinson's, uh, comment, which I agree, uh, speeding is a problem. Uh, it's a problem in my area where people just, you know, don't even realize it's a residential neighborhood. There are a lot of people in the community, you know, speed down to the plaza. One thing, um, I think we should look at, and I, I think New York City may have gotten the state law passed, uh, but, you know, right now, the citywide speed limit is thirty miles per hour, the minimum speed limit. Um, you can, in certain very, um, exceptions, reduce it to twenty-five, but you have to meet certain standards. And I think that was done in, uh, on a street, a part of North or South Pearl, I think, um, a couple of years ago. But one thing we might really want to look at is, uh, trying to get state law, state authorization, uh, to lower the, the citywide speed limit, uh, within the city regardless of location, to twenty-five miles per hour, which I think New York City may have gotten. Uh, it would require, yeah, they did, okay. Thanks, JR. Uh, that, that would begin to be a step in the right direction. Um, it would require a home rule bill. Uh, but I think it's something that we should seriously look at, um, and, uh, as, as one method. Um, and that's something where the council can request our legislators to, uh, to move forward on that. It wouldn't happen if we get it until next year, uh, but I think that's something we should seriously look at. Um, and again, I think i- in terms of especially, you know, residential neighborhoods, uh, especially where you have a lot of children, um, where, you know, a lot of people just don't understand that, um, we really do need to look at traffic control and speed control, uh, tools. You know, we can't do speed bumps, but we can do speed humps. And I think we should, we need to look at that more seriously, get a better understanding from the Traffic Division as to what standards they use to determine whether or not, uh, they're appropriate. Uh, and that's another area where, because there, there might be some money involved, where we might want to look in, in, uh, in terms of the budget coming up, uh, in terms of putting some money in the budget allocations that would, uh, support the implementation of speed humps, uh, in those neighborhoods, uh, where it's appropriate. But I think we also have to get a better understanding from, uh, Traffic Safety as regarding the analysis they do, uh, and how we can, you know, look at that to make this program work effectively. And for people who don't know what it's, a speed bump is a speed bump, you, you know, like that. A speed hump is a gradual incline that slows the traffic down, uh, and can be very effective. It can be a permanent bump, or it can be a temporary one, depending on, uh, what the appropriate use is. But I think we need, I, I, I think the council needs to be more aggressive in pushing, uh, the use of speed humps. So those are two things I think we should look at.
Thank you. I saw Mr. O'Brien's first. Mr. Bryant?
Um, yeah, I'm just going to follow up on something that Tom Howie said earlier about the lack of sidewalks in parts of the 15th Ward. We've had that same problem, particularly in the Pine Bush area. Rap Road, Frontage Road, Pine Lane, have no sidewalks and no streetlights. And we did bring it up with the, uh, that whole planning process they have with the walkability study. It got on the radar, but not as higher priority. It doesn't look like we're going to see street, see sidewalks there for quite a few years. And it, it really is a safety issue.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Holley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we do have laws on the books, and one, one of the problems we have right now is enforcement. Uh, you know, we don't have a, a Traffic Division, uh, group, I don't believe anymore, that goes around and makes sure that, you know, speeders are caught. Um, and the big problem I want to bring up, and it is a state law, is pedestrians and the crosswalks. I've almost been killed, and, um, you know, it happened on the university, uh, where, where I work, and I was able to get the plate number and report it to the UPD, the Uni- University Police Department, and they were able to contact the person. Um, and then what they did was, they went there and they had a patrol car there keeping an eye on that crosswalk. But that's what we need around the city. We can't have, you know, we put more laws on the books, we can't enforce them. So, you know, my feeling is, and I've brought this up over the years, if we don't have enough police, let's bring in the state police who have radar, who can, you know, have the time and have the manpower to help us out, and also with the county. We can have the Sheriff's Department help us out with this. We're, we're taxpayers. We pay taxes to the state. We pay taxes to the county. They should be able to help us in this time of need when we're trying to rebuild our force. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, something about, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm going to continue that conversation for a bit. I think it's important that we look at all objects on the table, which have a best decision. We have had a few minor, uh, 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 five, five tables, uh, and, you know, it needs. Signs have been good. Better vessels of, uh, more fortune is good. But we should all have all, all objects on the table, you know, with the lights and cameras, um, uh, streetlights. But you know what? They slow people down. We can analyze the controversial issue, but they slow people down in those intersections. Um, so I think we shouldn't have all those, all those objects on the table for those best decisions before we have more individuals injured, um, you know. And it's going to happen, but that's happening. Um, I also want to touch on the local law app. Um, Jack, you got the email? Let's set up a meeting with that individual this weekend. Um, you know, I think face-to-face interaction has worked better for me than phone calls. So let, let's have that conversation. Um, if you have residents that have questions or concerns about this policy, let's have those conversations with them. I'm not chiding away from any conversations about this. I know it's controversial. I know it, it's got a lot of misinformation being put out there. A lot of misinformation, uh, will be shared and scary, the same individuals that are actually benefit from this policy. But I do believe that we made a lot of amendments, uh, listened to both sides, and have worked very hard to find a fair, without taking away the core of what this bill is about. And the call for me, to call both tenants and landlord accountable for their actions. So let's have those conversations. I'll be there, uh, long way along to make sure people feel more comfortable with it because there's a lot of misinformation. And what I've had in the long, long conversations, face-to-face, most times people walk away, not a hundred percent happy, no one ever walks away half a different happy, but at least understanding where we are and why we're doing this. Uh, and that's a lot better than phone call. And that's a lot better than going over, you know, they just yell at me and everything else. So, you know, let, let's have those, any of you residents that wanna do that, like, I'll, I'll free up my weekend just for that. So we, well, we open the misconceptions and buddy at this house, and that's me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise you, when I came here tonight, I was happy just to be back in here. And, you know, as I listened to the comments, you know, what did we expect to happen in the streets of Albany when we took away the traffic department? You know, in the south end, I'm so tired of being present when people call the cops and their response is, they don't wanna start, you know, they don't wanna make a call because they don't want one person to be mad. And, and, and I just think that our expectation of our police has gone down so far. You know, they're paid good money to enforce the rules, and a lot of times, as I'm riding through the city, you see, you know, we spent a lot of time in here talking about the dirt bikes. And dirt bikes are riding past police officers, and nothing is happening. And, you know, I think that the quality of life is being interrupted because there's no accountability. And then we get in here and we, you know, we, we put more pressure on this body to do more work that's not gonna be enforced. And I think that, and this is not a knock at APD, this is just the truth. Things are happening in our community, and it's spinning out of control. And I think that the first place that we should start is a conversation with the mayor and a conversation with the chief about them giving direction on how to address it first. Because right now, nothing is happening. We can go throughout Albany, and if you wanna take a ride with me, I can, we could just go and watch that people are doing things freely out in the open air. If you go on Central Drive in the daytime, you can see hand-to-hand drug transactions in public sight. So if I can see it, why can't the police see it? And like I said, it's not finger pointing, but I'm, I'm, I'm fed up because a lot of the stuff that goes on, goes on in the neighborhood that I sleep in, the neighborhood that I work in, the neighborhood that I live in, the neighborhood that I care about greatly, and, you know, I, I, you know, every time the word equity comes up, you hear, like, we don't have sidewalks. There's a lot of things that we don't have. And there's the, and the reason why we're having a conversation about equity, because it's been going on so long. And nobody had, nobody was complaining when, as a kid, you know, they took away our community centers, they took away boys' clubs, they took away anything that was beneficial and, and, and productive in the upbringing of difficult situations. And twenty-five years later, we're gonna act surprised that our numbers are what they are. And so I, I just feel like we keep on giving people a pass. Like, you know, what Mr. Anderson said earlier, we're pouring money into failing situations that we know are failing, and nobody's saying anything about it. And I, I just, you know, I think that it's time that our, our, you know, I understand gun violence is out of control, but it's no way that people, 'cause sometimes I feel like saying something to them. And I shouldn't have to police the police. I shouldn't have to encourage a police officer to do their job. And, and a lot of times, that's just not what hap, that's, that's not what's happening in our city. And instead of things going in a smaller direction, they're getting greater. And, you know, until we start having a real, honest conversation, we're never gonna get the results that people are looking for. And it's just gonna be a spin circle and a, a, a continuous spin circle. So tonight, I'm challenging, and I'm asking that we start asking the questions that address, speeding is big time a problem in every neighborhood in Albany. And, and, and we're, we're recruiting, you know, more residents to come to our city, and how are we, how are we gonna deal with that? And that was one of the reasons why I was supportive of the people that came here and they complained up at, about St. Peters, about the congestion of the traffic up there, because I've lived up there, and I, and that's a reality. And if you're gonna bring in an influx of additional people, how are we gonna rectify the problem that's already there? And like I said, in Albany for too long, the problems are ongoing. We got twenty-year problems that have never been addressed. And so, you know, I'm challenging us to be more productive in dealing with those issues so we can send a message, a crystal-clear message, that you can't just do what you wanna do. And the last thing that I wanna say is that I've been hearing people just point their finger and, you know, talk about Albany. You know, it was, it was said, I don't know if it was the mayor or the police chief, that our, our gang members are coming up to sell their drugs because they get, you know, and, and I just feel like somebody needs to speak up for our city. Somebody needs to send a message that it's not okay just to say what you wanna say about Albany. We got people in Pittsfield saying stuff, we got people in Saratoga saying stuff. You know, I, I love my city. I love it so much that I put myself out there a lot of times and, and speak up for stuff that not many are, are touching. And I just think that if we are gonna fulfill the, the promise and, and, and the opportunity that people gave us, we have to start having those real conversations. And, you know, that would be a great place to start with, is traffic. Because cars are being used every day, and our streets are filled up with a lot of people that are impatient. And, and they're putting not only themselves in jeopardy, but they're putting others in jeopardy. And, and I don't wanna wait until something happens for us to be reactive. Albany has become a, a, a huge reactive city. The only time that we do something is unless something negative happens. And, you know, me, I would rather be proactive, because being proactive, that means that we're saving somebody's lives, and we're also sending a crystal-clear message of our expectation of our, our mayor, our expectation of our police, and more, most importantly, our expectation of anybody that come into our city and utilize our roads. So I thought, I, I think that we really need to have that hard conversation with, with, with the chief and with the mayor in, in terms of addressing some of these things that have been going on for so long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. No more?
Well, I'd like to say this in closing, before we ask for motion to adjourn. Council, your council leadership has expressed grave concerns on how our, our police chief is dealing with these issues in our city. Your council leadership has addressed this with the mayor. We've addressed it stating, we no longer, the chief has not presented any type of plans or solutions. You are the, you are the, you run the police department. We come to you. We have no, we have not seen a plan on how we're going to deal with dirt bikes after we pass legislation that increase the fines. We've seen no plan how we're going to stop speeding in this city. So basically, what we're talking about is we hire commissioners, we appoint them, and we wanna see plans on how do you solve the problem. We should not have to go to the administration every other Monday when we meet and ask for, what are you going to do about it? And so, when, when, when Mr. Johnson talks about it, when everyone talks about it, we want those people in those positions. They have those titles for a reason, to come up with a plan. How are you going to deal with A, B, C, and D? Try, speeding has been constant in the city. I've been on the council, I've always talked about it. We always say this, remember, we always say, on Delaware, when you're going past Grayson Cemetery, you say, slow down. Why? Because you're gonna get pulled over. We have a city where people aren't, people aren't afraid to be, they don't think they're ever gonna get pulled over. They don't, and that's the truth. Why is that? Have we done studies where people are speeding in certain neighborhoods, not just on our main corridors? But we know in this city, most speeding comes down to one-way streets in our neighborhoods, because people are bypassing the main fairway. So this is not something that, that is rocket science to figure out. We know in main fairways, Washington, Central, people will avoid those streets and go down one way so they can speed. And we have done nothing about it. So I applaud our council members for, definitely Mr. Conti, Mr. Robinson for standing up saying we need to look at this as a council. But by going, our chief of police needs to start looking at it and putting a plan in front of us. We are part-time council members, but most of us work full-time. But our police chief and every commissioner is full-time. So we want our chief to come up with solutions and some plans that we can get behind. And no, we don't wanna hear, if we do this, the community's going to complain. We don't wanna hear that. We wanna see a plan on how do you deal with this speeding and how you deal with these dirt bikes, and we haven't seen it. And I know Mr. Kimbrough has been in touch with the police personally. I have, I've questioned him face-to-face. Nothing. Mr. LaJoy, who sits there, thank you. He solved the problems. In his position, what did he do? Got with council members, made suggestions, this is what I think we should do, blah, 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 blah. Puts in front of the council, we act. That's a person, that's a commissioner doing their job. That's a commissioner hearing what the issues are, researching them, and then coming up and saying, council, we want this done, we need to pass this. Of course, if we had bigger staff, we could get some of this stuff done ourselves. Of course we could. And that's why I want the council, Mr. Conti talked about the budget. We need to start looking at the budget to increase staff in this city, for this city council. We have to do it. We cannot be equal branch of government and not have the staff to do the work so we can be more productive. So council members, start thinking about that. I'm pretty sure you're getting approached every time about the, the money that came down from Washington. What are you, what are, what are we gonna do with council members? Start sending us what you think should happen with that money. We need it. So when we look at these things, when we, when a new council comes in and we talk about accountability, and we talk, when we interviewing these people for these, to, to vote for them, we need to take all this in consideration. All of it. All of it. Because if we don't, this is what happens. And then it leads me to my final point as a legislator, as a legislative body. We need to start looking at whether, whether we have our commissioners every four years, if the mayor should stay the same, whether commissioners should come in front of us and get re, reappointed. That's the legislation I think we need to, we need to act on. So every four years, these commissioners don't feel like, oh, I'm here, and only person who can remove me is the mayor. No, when you come in front of us four years later, if you still, the, the, still serve at the pleasure of a mayor, you're going through that process again. I think this council, we need to do that. I'm pretty sure that'll probably have to be a local law, but we need to do that. We have to. This is part of being a legislative body, and the, and Mr. Johnson, for, for years and years, the reason why nothing has been acted, because the council historically has not saw themselves as a legislative body. They saw themselves as, I'm just here, the mayor supports me, that's it, I do whatever the executive asks. This council has not been that way. I think the council la, four years ago, has not been that way. We are maturing as a council, and I believe the next council will take us to the next step when it comes to legislating. So who, so the mayor of Albany, you know, she took, when? She's gonna have a council that's going to be proactive, that's going to look at themselves as a partner. And when we talk about a partner, we're just not talking about a partner just in name. We're talking about a partner on the budget, we're talking about a partner when we see commissioners not doing their jobs, that they're held accountable for that. So with that being said, I'm off my soapbox, but this is...
Hey, I have one quick solution for traffic. And a former head of traffic safety told me, he says, you know what, Joe? He said, it was under control when he ran seven cars per shift. Seven cars for three shifts at night, traffic control was on. That's all they need, but they need manpower to do that.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and that's gonna be their, that's gonna be their thing. But guess what? You can still have a plan, you can still have a plan and put in front of the council, this is what we can do with what we have.
That's my plan.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.
Uh, we're going to juniors, anybody wanna?